...on Friday. So, we have to start very well with how we do this. And we don't, that's why we're in this situation.
If I may, Mr. President, I promised myself I wouldn't get OBD through this, but here's the situation. We now have a zoning enforcement official, part-time. I spoke with the zoning enforcement official the other day. He said, "Look, do us a favor, keep track of how many complaints you have, how many you get resolved. If we find there's an exorbitant amount of them, we will add, we will need counselors, we'll add more money to the budget, possibly a full-time job." The problem here is the enforcement issue. We have zoning ordinance and regulations that are in town that are just not being enforced. This ordinance was suggested by Administrator Hamilton, and I can say exactly what Gary said. You know, it's a solution in search of a problem, but it did tighten up the ordinance, and it's a matter of, just like you leave here, you'll see you're in a 20 mile, 20 mile an hour speed zone. It's an enforcement issue, so this would just give the enforcement capability for a zoning official to go in and enforce stuff like this. And I have to tell you, we spent far too much time and resources on this one ordinance already. So, I am prepared when we come out of public hearing to make a motion to accept this. If there's problems with it, let somebody else rewrite it. Not that I'm washing my hands, and I've suggested a lot of times going into this. I think it's a good ordinance.
Here's a question, we didn't give five tons to my weight, does this five tons gross? Are there no points that show the various types of trucks in this?
I'm not sure what the difference is between combined weight and gross. Gross vehicle weight, to my knowledge, is the weight of the vehicle and its payload, and it's approved payload, as I mentioned before. Super duty has a GVW, actually, online it's called a GVWR. I have no idea what the R stands for. GVW is gross vehicle weight. It says it's 14,000 pounds, which is seven tons. The vehicle curb weight, which is actual weight, 6,360 pounds. Payload is 7,600 and whatever the difference is pounds. So, again, if you allow eight-ton vehicles gross vehicle weight, you're going to be allowing small dump trucks. You're going to be allowing maybe even a small boom truck, trucks that perhaps Cox Cable and those sort of companies use. I just don't think they belong in our residential zones.
No, I think I fully agree with you. My other concern too is the types of vehicle plates trucks can get. Combination plates, they're, you know, as commercial plates.
Well, I believe in the state, I think it's foolish that all pickup trucks have to be registered as commercial.
I'm not sure if it's all on a certain, I'm not sure if it's a commercial, that they're never used anywhere.
But today, you see all kinds of people driving pickup trucks. They're commuter vehicles, they're family vehicles, they're not commercial vehicles anymore. And of course, no one wants to prevent someone with a heavy-duty pickup truck from keeping it in their yard. But if it's got a name or a business painted on the side, like my neighbor, two of them, one of them is over five tons, and the other one's a pickup truck, and he's running a business out of his garage, and I have filed a complaint. And it's the wrong place on a residential zone. Needs to be stopped. But as far as enforcement goes, I'm sure our zoning official doesn't have the time or the need for that matter to go around town looking for violations. I think it's up to people to make a complaint, and then, of course, the zoning official will do his job. So, if somebody's got a large truck in his yard, and his neighbors don't care, he's good. Nobody's complaining. But if you do have a problem with that, you don't want to look out your window and see a small dump truck and trailer that carries a backhoe. You need to be able to do something about it. And I think that the enforcement only comes with a complaint, basically. And they find tons, is that, other towns have the same thing. Compliment doesn't have a tonnage limit. I looked at their ordinance, and it specifies different types of trucks. And it says dump trucks and boom trucks and trailer tractors and things like that not allowed in residential areas, but didn't have a weight. So, I don't see why five tons is not okay. I think it makes perfect sense. It's been that way for years. We, by the way, the AHA ordinance committee, this committee, did not change that. We added those other two sections, called farmland and forest land. The five tons has been there. That's not a change. So, I don't think it's something we should be debating at all.
Mr. President, this is our clarification group. Vehicle weight rating is the amount recommended by the manufacturer that includes the vehicle weight and the payload.
Okay, so R stands for weight?
Combination weight rating is when you have a tractor-trailer, a combination class, when you brought up that class sheet. So, a combination class where you can have multiple vehicles attached, so multiple trailers, which I don't even think are legal in Rhode Island.
You have trailers?
Like tandem trailers, it's all of that combined. So, on my expedition, it's, you know, 8,300 pounds, whatever it is, and then I have the boat on top of it, and then whatever else it is. It says everything combined, but only on a combination class, which my truck isn't.
So, I could feel the meaning.
Right, but I think that it fits, that it belongs in here to say the group combined weight because it is all encompassing.
So, this ordinance was passed by this ordinance committee, the AHA committee, in May. It's August, I think it's time to exact it, but I appreciate you making the motion. I would love to see it passed.
Can I answer your question, Mr. President? Gross combination weight is the vehicle and the trailer. If you've got an expedition, and you park it in your driveway under this ordinance, it's not legal.
Only on a combination?
No. Gross combination vehicle weight applies to a pickup truck. There are pickup trucks that are rated with gross combination vehicle weight up to 42,000 pounds.
Yes.
Including your expedition.
My expedition is not a combination vehicle.
It is a...
It is capable of pulling a trailer.
That's true.
And gross combination vehicle weight rating includes the vehicle plus the trailer that it can pull.
Right.
That's why the language in this ordinance is a problem. Gross combination vehicle weight rating is the wrong one to apply five tons to. Five tons, fine, again, I would not agree to eight tons because you're jumping up truck classes. Calling it gross combination vehicle weight rating is the wrong place to go, folks.
I wasn't coming in for this tonight, but as I said to you earlier, I make my living in occupational health and safety, and I'm pretty much close to making that for the DOT regulations. So, the FMCSA, Federal Motor Carrier Safety Industry, that they define a commercial vehicle as any vehicle weighing 10,100 pounds or more, all right, in combination. So, you, so for instance, what your ordinance is, I have a Tahoe at home that probably weighs about 5,000 pounds, 4,000 pounds. I also have a camper that weighs about 7,000 pounds. So, if you pass this ordinance, that means I can't park my Tahoe and my camper on my property?
Is your Tahoe...
If you're combined, combined, if you go by GVWR and you strictly say GVWR, no more than five tons, that's what you want to go to because anything over 10,100 pounds, five tons, is a commercial motor vehicle by the USDOP definition. So, a skateboard, a one-ton dump truck, a cube truck, if you stick to that five-ton limit on a GVWR, not a combined, because what's going to happen is you're going to have a guy with a pickup truck and a landscaping trailer, and you're going to take away that ability to have that trailer on the property, combined. You've got to be careful when you go to combined. Look at that kind of flat lines, I could give you regulations.
So, in other words, we just said five tons gross weight?
Gross vehicle weight, five tons, 10,000 pounds. If you stay to that, now I can have my pickup truck, my Tahoe, and my camper.
Can I say something?
Can I say? So, Section 614, Parking Storage and Labor Creation Act, addresses trailers. So, the two ordinance will try to make themselves, because this ordinance says we can have two trailers on your property, and this one says we can't exceed the weight rate of five tons combined. So, this one says you can't have two trailers on your property, but this one's going to tell you not if it goes over the limit.
I think, is everybody focusing on 6.13 being of commercial use? That's the question here. In any residential district, the parking and storage of all commercial vehicles and construction equipment over five tons. I'm talking about somebody's project versus an expedition.
Mine's an expedition.
You're not using it commercially, are you?
No, I am not.
Do you have a sticker on such goods commercial or running operations out of your house?
No.
How do you run?
No, so it's not commercial.
That's the point here. I'm ready. Is there any more complicated questions, President?
Is anyone else that can speak on this ordinance? During that, closing of public hearing.
Motion.
Yeah, make a motion, close the hearing.
I'll second that.
Closing of public hearing, seconded by Congressman Sosty. Any further discussion? During that, our pro vote, please, to close the public hearing.
Souths, yes, Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soares, Mr. Valence, Mr. Bouchet?
Yes.
Mr. President, in front of us, it's been granted about four over a year now, Section 6.13, parking and storage of certain vehicles. I'd like to make a motion to accept this as written, as suggested, amended by the Ordinance Review Committee with the following edit to take place. Under 6.13.2, where it says in any residence district, strike that, put it in any residential district. And that is my motion to approve, to accept.
Second.
Motion. Motion by Congressman Sosty, to discuss it.
I had brought up in the previous meeting, I was bringing up again today, that all the conversation we had today surrounded residential districts. To a 6.13, one currently agrees that in any residential district, change the this ordinance to any residential district. I would like to add residential back into 6.13.1, count it in.
Counsel, in any residential zone district?
Correct, as the board reads today. And I've got my phone channel. And as all the discussion we had tonight, everyone up there always spoke about residential zone officials. So, I would like to leave the word residential in, so it doesn't impact any of our commercial property.
Because we can't, so, in any residential zoning district?
Yes.
Second.
We were in motion. So, we're in motion. Really in motion.
So, what do they have, a 6.13.1, agreed in any residential zoning district unless licensed?
So, the rest would stay the same, we'd just put the word residential in as it already is.
And just scratch the end and add to a A.
Right. It'd be grammatically correct.
Will elevate.
So, we've got a amended motion and a second.
Yeah, you have to move on the motion to amend, you have to move on the main motion as amended. Solely amendment is not a stop.
And yet a second?
Yep. Second, so, go, 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 please.
Souths, Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soares, Mr. Valence, Mr. Bouchet?
Yes.
Make a motion to amend.
Motion to amend the motion as amended. What's your making motion to amend on that?
I make a motion to amend a third item.
Okay.
Where it says five, where 6.13.2, where it states five tons gross combined weight, with the strike combined to five tons gross vehicle weight.
Okay, I'll second that. And also, just for verification, one more time, under 6.13.2, in any residential district, strike residence.
I didn't meant to interrupt.
So, I had a motion and a second. As you know.
On the amended motion?
I have a vote, please.
Okay, go, 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 please.
Souths, Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soares?
Yes.
Mr. Valence?
Yes.
On the main motion?
As amended.
As amended. I have a second.
Second.
Second, okay. So, the council, yes. Counsel, I'm going to change, second by, second by Congressman Nada, Congressman Sosty. Okay, on the amended bill, ordinance. Now, pro, go, go, please.
Miss Alz, Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soares, Mr. Valence?
Yes.
Mr. Bouchet?
Yes.
I think we can, this is number eight.
Ready. Second.
Okay, motion by Congressman Soares, second by Congressman Nada, Congressman Sosty. Okay, on the second.
I.
I had to make discussion by Council Board of Action, completion, proposal, and re-tribe ordinance discussion, other other action, zoning, use table treaty, re-tribe ordinance. A, before the planning board, and B, scheduled, big, public hearing.
Mr. President, the AHA, the Ordinance Review Committee wanted a little more direction on this. There are actually two recommendations at the Ordinance Review Committee. Mr. Valence, I think one of you speak about the two, whether to come up with draft ordinance or to come forward with the other recommendation.
Are you, both of you, are you nine, is that, are you eight?
No, that's separate. I believe number nine is by the conservative party of the overall power of town. So, number eight, correct me if I'm wrong, but number eight is what's before this town council, the work that was performed by the Ordinance Review Committee. Am I missing something here? No, you mean your way. Okay, I missed something, I, I...
Okay. I think you heard a little bit about this already. We've been meeting, as Paul said, weekly and sometimes more often than that, pulling together a wind turbine ordinance from resources that you've been able to find all over the world. Never mind that I just checked in Rhode Island.
You've spoken to the...
I'll try to speak a little bit better. We've drafted this ordinance using all the resources we can put our hands on, mostly through the internet, and really relying a lot on the local ordinances that have already been developed and the guidelines from Rhode Island. And what we've found is that the draft that we have before you, although it's very comprehensive, is not complete yet, and it is now become obvious to us that it's going to be very limiting in any allowance for wind turbines to be installed and operated in North Smithfield. And so, at this point, it's, our question is, is it really worth the effort to finalize this draft? So, it's still going to take some time. Put it before the town council, put it before the planning board, put it before the public, and all the work that's going to go into that. Then, if we do put it in place, the onerous implementation of what the building and zoning official has to go through, what the planning board has to go through, what the zoning board has to go through, to look at the applications that come in, if they get an application that gets approved, then it has to go again back to the building and zoning for the construction, which is a long process and very tedious and long drawn-out process with lots of inspections. Then it goes into operation, and we have the, again, the onerous task of looking at the operation on a regular basis to make sure it's compliant with the regulations. So, it's, it's a really...
What's the word?
It's a, it's a really overwhelming task to do all those things, put this in place, and then construct wind turbines, operate wind turbines, and make sure they're in compliance. We, it looks like there's not going to be very many places where they're even going to be able to put in a safe and, humanly safe, environmentally safe, and a well-maintained operation. The things that we looked at, that require all this work and the safety issues, is the fall zone, it's the shadow flicker that can affect people, is the ice throw in the conditions where it might be throwing ice off the blades to other people's property, the noise generation on other people's property, the emergency response requirements of a tower that's hundreds of feet tall, we don't have the equipment or the personnel for right now, also preventing trespass on neighboring properties, just that shadow flicker again, the noise generation again, the environment, what are the effects on the environment? We were talking earlier about not, it's not just the birds in the basket we talked about, it's also the aquifers, the water resources in the area, what are the concerns there? And then it's the big issue that people are concerned about is what's it look like, right? Do you really want to interpret that's now on your horizon where before what you had was just an open horizon? So, with all those considerations, a very limited number of opportunities in this town where we see that we might be able to put one in. So, the question is, do we go through all that work and end up with a very limited opportunity to put a wind turbine into this town, or do we just say, it doesn't make sense? Why not just say that we don't want the wind turbine doing this town? Case is only to say that it's just not an appropriate business in this town. And to support that, there's 13 other towns, that's fully 25% of Rhode Island that already have done that. They said, across the board, we are not allowing wind turbines in our town. And what's interesting is, a lot of those are on the coastline. They have much better winds, much better winds to drive a wind turbine than we do here in North Smithfield. And so, that's what we came before you with, is, you know, do you want us to continue and put this ordinance in place, or do we like to consider to say, hey, we did our research, we just don't see that it's really viable to put them in town, just take the easier route and say that they don't belong in... Again, it's kind of like the solar, we're looking for, what's the town's direction? Which way do you want us to go before we go down the wrong path and come before you and say, you know what, we like what you did, but that's really not the one.
Mr. President, if you'd... Sitting in on the Ordinance Review Committee, it's really not about expediency because the Ordinance Review Committee spent hours upon hours, hundreds of hours, looking at this, individual people putting their hours. There is a scientific reason for saying no to this across all zones of town. And if one were to look at the wind study that was put out by the Rhode Island Department of Energy, sorry, we ain't got the wind up there in North Rhode Island. So, that being said, the number of communities that already said no across the board, especially North Kingston originally allowed one, but through their experiences with a wind turbine, which was 83 meters, and I think that's just about somewhere around 260 feet, that's not 450 something, they said no. They came back and they changed those on the ordinances. So, we also have, it's going to pop on the agenda, I think that the folks, the residents of the quarter are of the same mind frame as well to say no across the quarter. If you read through this, there is tremendous standards, tremendous reviews that have to be done, engineering reports, for what? Because there's no wind patterns up here favorable for wind turbines unless you go up close to 500 feet. I'm truly in support of just saying no straight across the board. It is back upable, but still... So, I can speak for myself from the review committee. I feel good because when I read all these things, the scientific reasons to say no, they're here. So, they're measurable, they're objective, and I think I've just said a lot. Thanks.
I'd like to just clarify that that ordinance took the say no, what it does is, it says, you must do all these things in order to meet what would be the regulations that ordinance has passed to put a wind turbine into North Smithfield. And what we're saying is, in order to do that, there's very, very few places in North Smithfield where they can meet the regulations that we put together, which protect the health and the safety of the residential, of North Smithfield.
Yeah, or change the use table, say no, etc. But the Ordinance Review Committee did the smallest amount of work to come up with the idea to say, to say no. And I want to acknowledge two members of the Ordinance Review Committee, Mr. Bolcheck and Mr. Soares, in one of probably our third meetings, that we should just say no. Yes? We went through all this, and, but now we have substantial documents to say why we can say no in the use table. And even though it's in the draft form, it hasn't been adopted, all the hard work that has been put into it.
Just another note, one of the reasons that it is so comprehensive, beyond what Scott was mentioning or in addition, is that one of our major objectives was to protect the town before, during, and after. Fundamental importance, and that's why, in addition to the technical aspects and the where the wind is and where the wind isn't, those three things are profoundly significant, and they impact our resources. And that's another reason that we're giving you these two conditions, because if we, if we don't do the engineering on the front end to protect our roadways when the turbine is delivered and the thousands of yards of concrete come, if we don't protect the maintenance and the operation, and then if we don't have the money to decommission and deconstruct if an entity goes bankrupt, then we have a colossal eyesore. So, yeah, a layperson or someone could look at that and say, why on earth did you draft something with that many words in it or attempt to draft something? And it's because we tried to touch every base and know that if we give you something that you want and you enact it, it's going to do as much as it can to protect the taxpayers so that they don't have to look at something, an albatross, if the project falls apart, and then we're whole again if the worst case happens. So, it's a complicated matter, but it's, you've got to look at the whole picture because it's not, it isn't a solar farm, it's something far more substantial. I was amazed that you worked with this ordinance. Much store? Setbacks and environmental factors. One of the things I could never, I'm sorry, one of the things I couldn't, I couldn't... Much store was put into the drafting of this, and how the various aspects of this was to protect the citizens, but also too is that one aspect I always wondered about it because you have North Central Airport in Lincoln, just a stone's throw away, and my always concern was that, what would happen, God forbid, if, you know, you had a plane, small aircraft that was blown off course? I know they're supposed to have lights on these things, but lights burn out, and lives would be lost. I know myself, I looked into a lot of the aspects of it, and even my empty years, I was amazed at these rusted monoliths sitting in the North Sea, once the governmental subsidies run out, because we're abandoned. That's one thing I'd want to see, these ISOs. It's bad enough even on solar situations, just over the line to Millville. You have a solar, you want to call it a small solar farm right next to the highway line. I mean, it's an ISO, but shielded in some sort of ways, maybe it wouldn't be so bad. I know when there's a small one, it used to be a driving range a little further down into Uxbridge, and it's kind of shielded, so you wouldn't really notice it so much. But the one next to, I guess, if you want to quote the in-front-of-century lickers, to me, it's just a visual ISO. Getting back to the AHA committee, is that, I know myself, I would love to just, I would love to pass the ordinance because of all the work that was placed into it, but at the same time too, is that... At the same time too is that, and with all the work, I hate to say throw something away and just say, we don't want it, uh, we can, uh, we can pass, nor it's basically banning uh, wind turbines. So, and it's, it's something that, uh, I know myself, I'm kind of, uh, meaning, you know, which, which route to go. I, I hate to waste people's time, we're putting so much effort on this town from boards and commissions to help us on the council. And, uh, this could be the first aspect of it, we could, we could basically pass that as an ordinance, I'd be in favor of it. And then if, if the council decides to do something differently to ban all wind turbines whatsoever, they can do that as well. But I'd like to be able to put something, get something, get something to protect us right now and not really wait any longer. That's my personal opinion.
Mr. President, we're faced with a, I've got to call it a unique opportunity to save it. We have what the ordinance review committee is looking for direction from the town council. First question, do we submit the ordinance for wind turbines to the planning board for their determination if it's consistent with the complaint? Well, we know the complaint does not address renewable energy. Second, the other point is that, uh, it's been recommended by ordinance review committees to put no right across the use tables. And again, uh, I know I'm redundant, but I want to repeat this, because of the work that went into this ordinance itself, now we have reasoning to say no straight across the board. But, but here's my concern, I would have no problem making a motion to move the ordinance itself, the full-blown draft ordinance, I'll make that clear, to the planning board for their determination of consistency. And then I would defer to the residents in concerned neighborhood that are, uh, court and to hear what they have to say and to take, and they're, they're actually saying the same thing that the ordinance review committee is to say no straight across the board. This accomplishes two things. There's a time limit, when someone comes before the town for an ordinance, to have it reviewed by planning board and get it before them for a public hearing. By, by, I would suggest that we have court bring forward the, I know it's on the agenda, but it segues in, to have court come in and change the zoning use tables to not allow wind turbines anywhere in North Smithfield. That starts the clock, planning board will take a look at it for consistency. We can also this evening send in the ordinance itself to the planning board because I think actually it may help the town planner in his, uh, review of the required element of the comprehensive plan. So, I'm very comfortable with sending the ordinance through, asking the planning board to take a look at it, knowing that it is, uh, objective, scientifically reviewed, uh, and it'll also help the town planner in his preparation with writing the complaint. And then let the court folks come forward and ask for the, the amendment, uh, zone change table. Also too, and we also, uh, can I let that?
(LAUGHING).
But also if you want to have a schedule, you have to, we have a public hearing as well. Yeah, I'm not sure of the timeframe, but the, we're going to get to this on the agenda. So can we just make the motion now to, uh, submit the ordinance itself, the draft ordinance to the comprehensive, excuse me, to the, uh, town planning board for their determination if it's consistent with the complaint? We can do that. And then we'll set a date for that, the sooner the better, of course. Uh, you have to have a certain amount of time to, to put this in for three weeks. So our first meeting in October, we definitely cover that, correct? Okay. So I'm, I'm going to make a motion this evening to, uh, remand this to the planning board for their determination of comprehensive, uh, consistency, and this, of course, being the wind turbine ordinance. And we will schedule a public hearing for October 3rd, uh, for the first reading of the public input. And that's my motion.
What's your main conference, what's your second?
The chair. Discussion? October 6th is, I'm sorry, October 3rd is six weeks away. Is three weeks enough for the planning board to look at that? To give, um, Madam Clerk enough time to advertise for three weeks before we need that?
Correct that to Rob Chairman Nayler, he said, he sets the agenda.
Chairman Nayler.
At this point, I see no reason that it could not be put on the agenda for the first reading in September, which for some reason I think is the fourth. Uh, the fourth of September, uh, it is the September 8th.
Thursday, September 8th is your next meeting?
Really, September 8th should be, uh, September 8th, uh, and I see no reason why it cannot be put on the...
You started, the council, you want to finish it?
Sure. Okay, so, uh...
I'm sorry, September 1st.
September 1st.
Is the first, it's the first Thursday, so it's September 1st.
The first Thursday, all right, then we can actually take it on September 5th.
Okay, is that adequate time?
But future, almost exactly three weeks from this, oh yeah, sorry, it would be the 6th.
Yeah, is that working?
Um... Okay, then September 19th.
Okay, so this is the public hearing, first reading, September 19th.
So motion to schedule a public hearing and the first reading, uh, get the ordinance same way, the draft of the wind turbine ordinance to September 19th.
Second, my counsel, woman Nader said, I get my counsel Zelensky.
Uh, discussion, we've got a motion on the floor, hit the draft, we have one of the ad hoc, the ordinance review committee members recently.
Well, we've got a motion, I don't know, Robert Swilson.
I thought that, but it's just a draft, it's not complete.
We know, we know, it's a draft. I mean, the point is that there's draft state on every page.
And in the motion, I just made it still a draft.
I just wonder why it's necessary to send it to the planning board on its point, but it isn't complete. Actually, all we wanted to do was ask direction, should we complete it? Or should we forget about it and have you guys go across the board? I don't know, I think you're just wasting time, so I'm going to, the planning board might pay, because it's just a draft, it's not a plea.
Well, you know, I, I, the reason I, I'm doing this and the reason I'm going to defer to the, the court folks, they're pretty much saying the same thing that the ad hoc review committee said, no straight across the board. But I did want this to get before the planning board so they can look at it, read it, and say yes or no. Yes, it's going to take time for them, if they read it before they walk in, I don't think it should take that much time for them to say it's consistent enough.
Well, I'm thinking it's a moratorium.
I, I know, and that's why, Mr. Sors, we're, because first of all, we'd still have to, we'd have to notice this, this is just the first go around. So we still have that timeframe. If we, I just want to err on the side of caution to make sure we cover all the legal bases that we don't get, uh, end up in a court situation because of moratorium. So, it's not an interruption, not wrong.
I, I was just going to say, essentially, Mr. Sors, to say that if it's not complete and, uh, seems, seems like this board's leaving no across the board on, you know, do we want to use up any more time on this?
Getting the feeling without taking a vote, I'm all for that, we want to make a motion to go no, 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 straight across the board. And of course, I want to respect that the court people put it too, to take their motion to go no, 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 straight across. I'm comfortable with it. Okay, and is it, is it okay to go? I just want to make sure we don't get ourselves into a legal jackpot.
If the council is not one of those folk to do ordinance, if the council is not one of those folk with this work, who could make a motion? I guess, you know, I would just table this and then put it in ordinance for the next meeting, that's meeting what the ad hoc committee wants, wants to execute.
Well, I think the ad hoc committees here this evening, they called themselves to, to order, they can tell us right now what they wish to do, we can take that advice and we can make a decision right now. Out, out of respect for the court folks, I wanted them to have, we, we can have their application as well for town, uh, town plan.
Right, but you don't have an ordinance that, that you're going to amend the ordinance to mirror this?
I'll take it right now, as long as we can just say straight across the board, no, 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 in the use tables. We do have, uh...
But you don't have an, an, an ordinance that was filed by the town council.
Oh, we do, we do. We, we, we have a, to complete the draft, they want to know, do they want to complete, the ordinance review committee wants to know, they want to take, uh, to go in and complete the draft. I'm thinking that this is substantial as it is. However, we can also change it to the use tables to say no straight across the board. This evening, we can remand this to planning board and say, the town council says that we would want to change the use tables to not allow wind turbines in town. That would be a motion we can make also.
You can, but it won't be a first reading of your...
I understand that, but that'll be the motion for them to review the comprehensive plan consistency.
And then you're going to have that, that, that ordinance presented to them, drafted and presented to them?
Well, quite honestly, quite honestly, Conservoura Unique Rural Character Town Inc. has already done that, they have, it's a no, 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 straight across the board, so, uh, we are, we, not wasting, I don't say wasting, we are investing a lot of time into this, so I would make the motion, I withdraw my motion. Main, main motion, I withdraw my original motion. Yes.
Second, withdraw?
Withdraw. Oh, okay, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. So at this point, uh, seeing that the ad hoc, ad hoc ordinance review committee spent a tremendous amount of time on this, they were looking for guidance, uh, to complete the draft of a turbine ordinance for change the zoning use table to not allow wind turbines anywhere in North Smithfield, I know for a fact the majority of the ad hoc review committee wants to go with the latter, change the zoning use table to not allow wind turbines anywhere in North Smithfield.
Just, just to be clear, we, we have, we actually haven't had a vote on which way we're going to go.
Can you call that vote, can you ask for a motion?
They, they could, they could, however, uh, okay, what we're here, here with today, we, we are, you know, we're, we're asking for direction to go, and by the way, we're agreement that we'll go in whatever direction you, you are asking us to go.
And that's fair. So, before, it's not, if you, if you may suggest as a, uh, do I have to step down and make a motion? I'm looking for a vote. If, if someone in the ordinance review committee could make a motion to recommend to the town council that, uh, to take the use tables and not allow wind turbine anywhere in North Smithfield, if you took a vote on that, tonight you can do that because you are in session. And then we can take and make a motion to, to give an ordinance to the planning board for them to review.
But it, by definition, because we sent you a letter and unanimous consent at our last meeting, giving you two options, isn't that by default accepting either?
I, I think it is, I was going to make the motion to do it, but just be on the safe side, if, if, if the, the ordinance review committee doesn't mind, make, someone make a motion, someone second it, and then take the vote, and then this, this council, I'll make the motion.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we recommend to the town council to, uh, to, to, uh, list no in all of the zoning districts as it relates to wind turbines.
A second.
Okay, and then, and then, and that, in that case, we can do it simply, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any vote?
Let the record show was unanimous.
There you go.
Okay, Mr. President, we just had a vote of the ordinance review committee to recommend, uh, the change of zone use tables to not allow wind turbines anywhere in North Smithfield. I would like to take that motion of the ordinance and the recommendations of the ordinance review committee remanded to the planning board for their determination of consistency with the existing comprehensive plan of the town of North Smithfield. It's a motion.
Second by the chair, second by Councilman Sors, you too, Councilman Nayler, Councilman Nellis.
And I don't like a motion for a public hearing, that.
And, and by how you would work, yeah, and you also, uh, would want, you know, in one of these drafts that you have, the use table, if the use table is drafted, essentially the mirror image of the court, the use table, the document, it would be a comfortable, uh, recommendation.
Hold on.
What?
Hold on.
Here.
David, we can't interrupt, but it's...
The council is also going to draft an ordinance that changes the use table to no across the board in all zones, which is essentially, if you look at the agenda, what I understand Councilman Zelensky's intent is to adopt the use table that's being proposed by court.
Correct, and that will be section 5.4.9.8, it is a new section.
Not yet, but that's a different.
So that was my motion.
Yeah, I can ask a question, since, since we have the mor, the moratorium in process, is there, is there appropriate, so I'll make sure that the draft was in the record to show what work was done before the decision was, uh, taken by the council?
I think that would be very, uh, I think, yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll do that after we get the vote on this. I'm going to make a motion to, to have the first hearing from the council, well, excuse me, planning board chairman Nayler said that they could have this accomplished so that we could hold the first public reading on September 19th, which we're going to have to advertise and put out. That'll be my second motion. The third motion will be to accept the ordinance review committee's work on this, uh, to accept the work on this ordinance. Yes, we're going to do three, David. It's going to be three, so we got this first one. Everybody, uh, seconded it.
Row Kovo, please.
Ms. Al, Mrs. Nato, Mr. Sors, Mr. Zelensky, Mr. Boushey.
Yes.
Now the second one. Second one, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that the town council schedule the first public reading and first public hearing on September 19th for the wind, uh, wind ordinance.
I wish my counsel Zelensky seconded it, the chair. Public hearing for September 19th.
Correct.
Further discussion? Hearing, Madam Clerk, Row Kovo, please.
Ms. Al, yes, Mrs. Nato, Mr. Sors, Mr. Zelensky, Mr. Boushey.
Yes.
Mr. President, third, third motion I'd like to make is to take this, uh, ordinance of review committee's great work that they put forth on the wind ordinance and submit it as public record, is that what I'll do, Scott? Yeah, and submit it as public record. The draft, the draft ordinance and submit it as top of record.
I wish my counsel Zelensky seconded it, the chair to do so, and also to the, uh, maybe, uh, minutes of their, of their meeting.
They'll be on record.
That will be right into, into the record as well. So any further discussion? Reunion, Madam Clerk, Row Kovo, please.
Ms. Al, yes, Mrs. Nato, yes, Mr. Sors, Mr. Zelensky, Mr. Boushey.
Yes.
Motion passed, great. Mr. President, if you will, uh, acknowledge and allow the, uh, the residents and the members of court to come up and present their plan for a zoning amendment, and also to take a motion on this and to approve it and also submit it to the planning board for their, uh, review of consistency with the comprehensive plan.
Do we have to move that out? We still have it, uh, is that settled? So I think we'll move, uh, the line up.
Yeah, thank you, counsel.
Second, Madam Chair. Row Kovo, please, ma'am, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Al, yes, Mrs. Nato, yes, Mr. Sors, Mr. Zelensky, Mr. Boushey.
Yes, okay, Adam Nye. We can give you a microphone, yeah. Good evening, President, members of the town council. Morning, Susan, I represent the interests of the nonprofit corporation, conserve our unique rural town known as Court. I think most of you know I also have a personal interest in the outcome of this matter. It's Court's opinion and recommendation to the town of North Smithfield that they join the ranks with 13 cities and towns that prohibit wind turbine development in any zoning district. Court's recommendations reflected in the zoning use tables submitted for your consideration, which Mr. Igliosi referred to. Not only will the ordinance be burdensome to enforce, but by taking the position of voting no for wind turbine development in all zoning districts, the town limits its exposure to nuisance lawsuits and other consequential damage suits by residents whose property rights may have been infringed upon through wind energy development. And, Mr. Boucher, I know you have concerns that the ordinance review committee may have been wasting their time, but I assure you that they were diligently to...
been wasting their time, but I assure you that they worked diligently to develop a thoughtful and comprehensive ordinance to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the town's residents.
Excuse me, ma'am, let me correct you. I didn't say they wasted their time. I, I said they put a lot of time and effort into this, and I wouldn't wanna waste their efforts for putting all this time in.
It wasn't wasted time, and you're correct.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't a waste of time.
Because, if you just let me finish, it was through that process that it became very, very clear to all involved that even the most comprehensive and thoughtful ordinance would be impossible to enforce. I mean, if you think it's difficult to regulate parking vehicles on properties, I mean, to regulate a 411-foot, what is a power plant? And how that thing comes in, and how it's built, and how it's maintained, and how, when a developer may go out of business, how it's decommissioned, it's way beyond what this town can do. And that's why we made that recommendation, as well as became clear through the process that it would place a tremendous financial burden on the town, its personnel, especially fire, air, and rescue, and the infrastructure. These are all costs that will be shared and shouldered by the taxpayers. We recognize the town complaint seeks to conserve open space, however, that effort should not trample on the property rights of property owners. Interestingly, in a Q and A session with Mr. De Pasquale, the president of W E D last week, he admitted to residents who asked that he had entered into warrant leases to erect additional wind turbines in this town. So, the actions to protect the residents of North Smithfield from this development are necessary now. I would urge a vote of no, which you have already given us, and we, of course, would make that recommendation. I thank you for your consideration, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Attorney Susan?
Yes.
It's my intent to also make a motion that the Court's zoning amendment go concurrent with the town's zoning amendments starting today, so that we can, we can combine them into that September 19th public hearing. It's one and the same, but I wanna make sure both of them get before, before the planning board for their review of consistency.
Thank you for your consideration.
I'd like to thank the members of Court for their work that they've done. I'll be honest, I didn't know a whole lot about wind energy until this all popped up on our plate. And, members of Court, Sharon, yourself, Keith, have given me tons of information to go over, and I thank you for that. I thank you very much. Thank you all for all your hard work and to approve of it.
Well, as, as we mentioned too, the ordinance review committee really toiled tirelessly on this. I did witness a number of those meetings. We did give the, the ordinance committee some analysis in terms of land use in the other cities and towns of the state. So, we're very, very aware and very appreciative of the work that, that went into building that ordinance.
Point of order, Mr. President, this is, although the council has taken their own action, this is an application request by this organization. There, there is a timeframe by statute that the council has to operate. Planning board's gonna give their recommendations on this proposal within forty-five days. The council's gonna have their public hearing within forty-five days and decision thereafter. So, you'll probably get it all done, our timeframe works, but I want you to know that this is a separate item, it has a separate responsibility.
Yeah, so, listener, we, we heard the planning board chairperson, Mr. Naylor, say that they'll be on the meeting on September 1st for the planning board, and will certainly put this on the town council meeting of the 19th, so it gives adequate time. We also haven't taken into consideration notification in newspapers of general circulation. So, I am going to state this again, I want both Court's application as well as the town's to start the clock ticking this evening and have them run concurrent, even though they want them the same. Mr. President, you have a motion? You motion for... Mr. President, after hearing from Court Incorporated, I'd like to make a motion to remand to the planning board for their determination of consistency the zoning ordinance which will prohibit wind top, wind turbines throughout all zoning districts within the town of North Smithfield. So, that's going to the, that's going to the planning board for their determination of consistency with the existing comprehensive plan. That's a motion.
Do so. Further discussion? And Madam Clerk, Rob Kova, please.
Ms. Al, yes, Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mr. Sol, Mr. Zelensky?
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Okay. Motion to schedule a public hearing? Yes. I'd like to make a motion to consider, to schedule the public hearing to run concurrent with the town council's public hearing for this same item for September 19th.
Bush, my councilwoman Zawinski, second by Councilman Sol, to have the public hearing September 19th. Is there any further discussion? Hearing ended, Madam Clerk, Rob Kova, please.
Ms. Al, yes, Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mr. Sol, Mr. Zelensky?
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Moving on.
Doc. item number seven.
Mr. President, make a motion for a five-minute break. I don't know if everybody's too people, they don't wish to go home or stick around. Five-minute break?
Motion, my councilwoman Zawinski, second by Councilman Naylor, to take a five-minute break. Rob Kova, please.
Ms. Al, yes, Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.